Recording ready to go, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Hope I didn't wind up handing out the old one.
No, this one looks all right.
Okay.
All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add just a social services update on the building. And then, I don't know how to put it, a storm follow-up maybe to the leak.
Okay.
Yeah, something with the, if we want to word it like, I'd like to have something on there, some discussion about the trees up at Beulah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I, storm update, I don't, I don't know how we exactly.
That'll work.
Prior to our executive session, I'd like to add reassignment of the EM position.
Okay.
And the HR position.
Under other business, I'd like to have the Vanguard discussion.
Pardon me?
Vanguard, that Cindy had talked about a couple meetings ago. Anything else?
I don't know, do if we want to move, just move the executive session to last and do everything before that? I don't know if that's possible, but.
I think it is at the end.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's on the end, so whatever you guys want to do in between that is kind of your choice.
Okay. Sounds good, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll say aye as well, that motion passes. Minutes from the August 2nd meeting.
Actually, wait a minute.
I had to go back and double check some stuff because I was, okay, the ones you got have been updated.
I had Amanda look at it in this morning too, then she put in what she needed. Information on that.
For summit?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. So, yeah, so look at these because these are the ones that are most updated.
Okay.
Okay, because that.
But in the minutes there, we, we've seen that 9,341.50 for that contractor's more overbid for up at Shields Bridge, and we had tabled that. So, that should have been on our agenda. We wanted our state's attorney to look at it before we paid that bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tabled it.
Yeah.
And then, did you already mention this one, Jamie? Dr. Casper, and we want the state's attorney to look at those papers before we, or did we, sorry?
I think Todd did and Travis has them, and I, I will explain when we get down to that. On the agenda, the.
Other business?
Other business, yeah.
Other than that, those were my only questions from the minutes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Special meeting minutes from August 9th. Is there a motion to approve, or?
Just questioning if we need more in it, or.
The only thing here required is motions.
Okay.
Now.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jean to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second that motion so we can have discussion. Is there any discussion on the minutes as presented? Any discussion?
I still felt like there needed to probably be more in it, but if all we need in it is motions, then I guess we've.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next up, we got review bills. If you just bear with us, we go through all the bills and review them, and then it gets a little quiet up here.
And that generally takes about till 9:30, about a half hour. It looks like it's going to be until 9:30.
Looking at that stat.
And just make it so everybody signed in, if anybody hasn't signed in yet, could you do that, please?
Buster, you're just in time to pay the bills.
Jean, I have my copy, if you want to see what you're missing. He took mine, my copies, but I think he just really wants to find it.
Is this on budget? I can go there for you.
Okay.
One through five.
I'll apply your whole line number to it.
Okay.
Did Rick tell anyone he was not going to be here?
Yeah.
Sorry, we weren't here.
He went in here when I told everybody else.
Then I could.
We know how you like your table space.
I'll probably be encroaching on your period here.
Okay. No, it's a special, it should only be four by seven. From our single reserve or something.
Sounds awesome, yes.
We'll have to ask on that one, I mean, we should re-compensate her, but we might have to charge the city.
Definitely, I was just wondering if we were supposed to do that, or the city's.
Okay.
Right, or am I wrong?
I didn't even think about it, yes. Just happy it's open and available.
Right. My Mark. The bottom mark, if you could sign in, we appreciate it, thank you.
Travis, where do we put that, like, the correction on that motion that we sent?
I guess we could probably just talk about it.
When he walked in, it made me think of it. I know, it's blank, but it should be taken off of there.
Because it throws me off, I like look, I'm like, oh. Yeah.
Which one are you typing now?
We don't know why it keeps getting down, there even needs a zero, but why would you even have that on there?
It's going to stay on there until it's sold, but it's just a lot of money, right?
Right.
We already have started the process, that's why I put it on there for an update today.
Okay.
Utilities, yes.
Yeah, because we agreed to sell it, but I don't remember signing the date or anything on it, so.
Yeah. Just need to discuss it again. Travis, what's that, like Shore States?
What's that?
Like Shore States, like.
Oh, that's the Water Resource Board project, I was checking in on it.
I got the WRB, I got that.
Yeah.
With that on there.
It's finished here. It's expensive, whatever it is.
It's outside.
Am I dumb and doing all the things I? I'm just wondering if it was, I'm here, I haven't seen anything.
I just kind of came away, I figured it was.
I know, right?
I know, but you have something to do with that one.
I was waiting for you to say something.
Well, Jean, you have daughters.
Let's say feminine, I Jean.
I'll inform them.
I know, that's a tech on Jean.
Yeah.
But even at that, it still does.
You never know, it could be for noses.
Right.
It could be for noses.
It could be.
Sure. You are correct.
He's probably never seen, she's the man.
So you guys just start cheating, right? I think that's what happened tonight, I don't understand. Oh. She's been waiting because of the, I mean, probably didn't even for, I don't see her.
Has she really? Oh my goodness.
Just, just, I'm trying to think, that's mine, that one?
Yeah.
They're both, I think there's only one, yeah, I don't know if they changed their name.
I, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know of any other places in the state that really does that.
Good morning. If you could please sign in, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
We're just going through our bills right now, so.
Carmen?
Yes.
On this, like, it must be part of like e-Dispatch and stuff.
Yes.
For when Oliver pays their fee, that's what helps pay for some of like their portion of like this amount.
Okay, is that?
That amount every month we pay, so then it's a state system, and it's going to replace the equipment every so many years.
Okay.
So we're basically, yes, putting up maintenance on our system.
That's part of Oliver's fee, just like some of what they pay us pays for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Their portion.
Divided like one-sixth of our population.
Okay. I was just making sure I was understanding it.
Oh my gosh, do we still have these questions?
I saw it and I was like, oh boy. Well, they have to be published for two weeks. And they have been there for two weeks for, and to get to that point, so, yeah.
Wow.
I'd have to, in the future, levy for animal control.
And when they get berries, like really late, can they turn it in and get money for the quarter?
They should be able to get the quarter, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that's already been discussed on.
Well, we just mentioned that we saw the horses on there again, and I thought that was done and over with, but I guess not.
I mean, they were there for a certain time, and then they had to be published for two weeks, so yeah, I mean, we probably are at a month, and then. Guess it's still.
I gotta understand, I gotta be spoken to correctly, I can't overhear what you're saying.
Where are Mark going, does he need a mark?
I don't know, Mark went nowhere.
So Carmen, we did find out this is the Beulah impound, not the Beulah pound.
Well, I know she's checking on it.
Well, now it says impound, multiple times, so I'm assuming it, oh, but then there's dog pound keys, so.
No, I think there's only one impound, won't we? Beulah pound at the impound?
No.
Beulah pound is at. Do you want me to go ask Gwen? She's the one that was checking on it.
Because they should be two separate entities. Because here it says dog pound, but then here it says impound again, which is what we questioned last time. There's more, yes. So, Carmen took one that's in between here.
Okay, I was just looking for a paperclip or something.
Yeah. What do we? Oh.
Just want to put something on this, let me know. Right, right for 24/7.
What's that?
It's right for 24/7.
Okay. If you, if you want to turn that one sideways, that's not a word.
Gwen will explain it to you, Jamie, because there's, it's technical.
I think what happened here was, it should have been paid by the City of Golden Valley initially, that they billed the county, so then the sheriff's office wants to contact the City of Golden Valley, and they send the check to us, so now we just have to pay the bill.
Well, one spot says pound, dog pound, and the back part says impound, and that's what we questioned last time, because one spot said pound, and one spot said impound. And we think they're two different areas.
That I don't know.
I'll check on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's, it's just the same question we had last time, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Jean had.
Yeah, went sideways.
Or did you go right?
Right before the 24/7.
I don't know if we need that anymore. I don't think that. Because we switched.
Maybe for.
Maybe for...
The weed board, they shouldn't be getting charged tax, correct?
For what?
The weed board, like for ATV bill?
Shouldn't, but it's not uncommon, or we can ask for reimbursement on it, but... Depends on how we, if we set up accounts, how they're set up.
You guys don't see what we think, but every single invoice has tax on it.
So what they need to happen then Travis, is we just need to contact them?
I think so.
Right, so that we should do that, just so that way in future too, because I think we do do business with that.
The sheriff's office and stuff, just so I don't...
Carmen, can you look into the Moritz Sports and Marine, they charge sales tax on an item that the... Was it the weed board?
All the items have tax.
All items have sales tax on them. So Jean, after that one, I'll be able to count them. I'll go this way, so the one she's looking at goes in front of those.
Sticky notes.
Yeah. Oh, so it's reimbursement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's close enough. That goes in...
Right here.
Between. After that.
Right here.
After that. Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
My only question was about the payment for Gwen for the mileage.
Oh.
Do we have to check with the city?
We'll have to check with the city, I mean, like I said, we'll probably pay it and then, um...
Get reimbursed.
Get reimbursed, yeah.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to approve the bills?
No motion.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Singedon, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Oliver, aye, that motion passes. Next up, we got Beaver and Buster, Mercer County Economic Development, if you guys know much of the front. Morning.
Morning.
Thank you for letting me come to speak to you. We sent a letter to you that I believe you all should have received, Mercer County Economic Development, which we refer to as MCD. You've been participating here in Mercer County since nineteen eighty-six, I believe it is. We've done a lot of projects in the past. Western and I have been working together to take and do more projects that benefit the county. The letter spells out some of the ones that we've recently done and some that we've done in the past. We've had an income stream from the transport station, but that will end in October. And we're looking at doing a lot of different things in the, in the county to help better the county. But we will need some type of income stream for that. We're looking at doing both membership and we, in the letter, we requested four mills. I don't think, since it was put in the primary budget, I don't think we can do that now, but maybe there's an allocation that we could take and consider. Right now, we are, some of the projects we're looking at doing is, both our cities have a JDA, and both of us are working on housing programs. But we'd like to see one in the county. Dunn County does a housing program, where they assist, they can get up to twenty thousand dollars for families to meet the criteria to take and build on Old Farmstead as a supplement. We're looking at helping our daycare centers, both with employment and supplemental. We're, I currently have a company doing a white paper to submit to, it's Washington DC, and it's for the Inflation Reduction Act, it's for recycling center to replace an industrial park here in Mercer County. Part of that, I think you guys, one of the sites we're looking at is the Basin Transport Site, which is now global, but it's been Basin Transport for years and now it's global. But part of that is, I think you guys addressed that at one of your past meetings related to the bridge on the county road and then the overlay upon the road that goes past the airport. Right now, our tonnage is down, so any type of activity we want to do is going to be limited there, so... We're also working on bringing natural gas to Mercer County. We have a group writing a white paper on that for the Inflation Reduction Act also. We've written several grants, we've hired grant writer that's worked the last eighteen months. We applied for a write-on, write over thirty million dollars with the grants, we were not successful. But those grants included natural gas in Mercer County, a tourism grant, and a STEM center grant. And we still are working on a STEM center grant. Buster's had communications, has been working with University of Mary and Bismarck College to where we can develop a STEM center here in Mercer County to help train, retrain, and train our high school students for, you know, in the trades or whatever it may be, so... Those are some of the things we've been working on. We're going to need some type of, some, some type of way to generate revenue, and our goal is to create projects that will generate revenue but for themselves. But even if we get a grant, typically those grants are eighty-twenty, and we need some way to meet that twenty. And we're looking at a combination of membership, and hopefully the county will be willing to provide some type of assistance to where we can take and build up that twenty, continue to pay grant writers, and continue to pursue these other options that will benefit Mercer County.
Well, one of the things too, and I'm sure everybody's aware, that, you know, we're, we're kind of in prime country, Mercer County, in terms of, there's some potential for some, I think some heavy-duty industrial stuff to happen in Mercer County in the near future. And as a representative of MCD, it would, it would be nice, we'd be in a position to help probably cope some of that along a little bit more. One of the things about looking at from a county-wide base is you have, it would give you more leverage versus if I were to look at it individually as the City of Hazen, which of course would be almost impossible for me to do, because we don't have any industrial area. And so I think part of it would be is, is, yeah, we need to try to start generating an income source so that we can do bigger, better things with MCD. And the thing about it is, is I know that Jean has served in the past on that, on that board, and the makeup, I don't want to say the makeup of the board is, has changed a whole lot, but I think the philosophy of what the board is trying to do is changing relative to Mercer County. You know, at one time, it used to be, we'd have representatives come in and they'd give us industry update and that type of thing, and workforce updates, and that was about the end of it. And the end gate, we didn't talk about what kind of projects could potentially happen, be happening, and, and actively sitting there looking at, trying to see what, who we could recruit and what we could do for the good of Mercer County and of course, all the other entities that are within the boundaries of Mercer County.
I guess I'd like to add, we are working with over a half a dozen organizations to create a, develop two industrial parks here in Mercer County. And we're not just looking for Mercer County, we're looking for state and federal funds for all of those to take and assist. And, you know, those, a lot of those will be announced here in the near future, but it's... Like Buster said, it's, they've been, MCD was very active when they first started, then they kind of tapered off, and now we're being active. You know, the Buffalo Hill facility would be vacant right now if MCD wanted to step up and did a buy-down, so we would have, we lost one business, but during we took it, we were able to put another one in that, in that building. So, and that's, that's key, is not to lose any businesses and always be on the game, and the ones that retire or move on, we need to make sure we replace them to benefit the county.
And I guess I've always looked at MCD completely different than JDAs. You guys don't necessarily look to create jobs, you look to create opportunities, but I don't know if, if the county in the future would look towards having a JDA possibly in the future, or...
I, I feel that there's a definite separation between a JDA and MCD in what they do. MCD, by bringing different businesses and helping those businesses be developed here in Mercer County, it does bring jobs. I'm the treasurer for the Beulah JDA, and their, their focus and their criteria is only on primer benefiting businesses that bring jobs, and that's how they, they weigh that. I don't necessarily agree with that, but that is, that's their mission statement, that's what their criteria is.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Is it my understanding we had funding in our budgets previously for MCD?
Um, I don't... One way, I looked at the, was it the twenty-one or the twenty-two?
Twenty-one, I feel like twenty-one had a...
Had a very small thing, but I don't know what that actually went to, it was like ten thousand dollars. Whether that got paid, I don't know, I don't know if you guys have received any, and I wonder if you didn't have like a dues thing in the past that may have been earmarked or something?
The, the last due structure that I found was in twenty thirteen. We did, we started last year talking about reinstating dues, and that might have been put in the budget because there was a number of about eight thousand dollars that was, that would have been tipped what we would have asked Mercer County for. Naturally, if the county is gracious enough to allocate or provide a mill levy, we would not ask Mercer County to provide any type of membership dues. That would be coming back twice, and so we prefer, we prefer to take and do Beulah allocation or some sort of mill. And there's, you know, in the future, in future years, we may want to take a look at mill levy, it's potential that we could, you know, just a scenario. If Mercer County allocated four mills, maybe those mills take care of the Beulah and Hazen JDA, and the rest was to MCD, and those three organizations work together, which would be the best probably scenario for Mercer County, because then you'd have three entities working together to benefit and prosper the county.
And then if we did that, the JDAs of Beulah and Hazen wouldn't be able to mill for their own purposes, they'd be kind of a share, yeah. So look at some options, and then, I know sometimes you guys get confused with coal conversion counties, which is a completely different entity. And that's, that's between McLean, Mercer, Oliver County, I think it's just those three. Anybody that has a power plant that converts coal to something?
Anybody that gets coal conversion, there's severance tax, is a member of that organization. So, yeah, they, they, they are a membership and they get their funds via membership. And they lobby very hard for, for our county and for the coal industry. Which I just sent out invoices for this year's dues for that entity. But they do lobby very hard, they're currently, currently in Washington DC with attorneys right now, they're being paid to file briefs in opposition to the EPA for the current EPA standards they're looking to impose on power plants.
Okay, any other questions from the question?
And why is your current funding source running out, is that just...
We, we own a small piece of property out there, and then Curly Haugan takes and has the majority share. And we had a fifteen-year lease with Basin Transport, and that lease is expiring on October first. So, and it's not been decided what's going to happen there, I've been in negotiations with Curly for two years, and with Global Basin Transport. been in negotiations with Curly for two years and with Global Basin Transload. And we thought we had a deal put together, but that fell through as of when we could go.
So that's why the last, we'll say fifteen years, they were self-sufficient. They didn't need a source. And the goal would be in the future probably to be self-sufficient again?
Yes, and it's through doing projects that hopefully will generate revenue. If you read one of the, one of the things McEd can do that a JDA wouldn't do, and that is to provide funds for studies for consultants to take and go out and do housing studies, employment studies, that would take and benefit all the businesses in Mercer County. The other thing that is important is the small cities like the Golden Heights, the Zaps, the big cities, and even Stanton, they don't have economic development directors, they don't have anybody representing them on a, technically on a county-state in county-wise. And so that's where McEd steps in and can help, you know, those smaller cities, also give them a voice and give them an opportunity to, you know, be part of grant writing and part of these different things, studies. The last study we did was a housing study, and that was, that was very instrumental in the Hazen daycare, getting the financing they needed to for that daycare. So I think that was, it was about thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollars that we spent for that study. Now, the study itself actually was over seventy-five thousand, the total study, but the McEd share was about thirty, thirty-five. And that was county, that was a county-wide assessment at the time when the study was conducted, the housing and childcare together.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess we're still in review of county budget for the end of the, it would be in October sometime when we'd have our final, unless we do it before then, but we'll, we'll review and see what we can, what we can do.
That's good. If there's any questions, please feel free to contact Buster and myself. We'll come and give you whatever information you need.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yep. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we got, next era with an update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the time this morning. Clay Cameron with Next Era Energy Resources. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues here to give you an update on our transmission line project associated with the Oliver Four-Wing project.
Okay.
Yeah, morning Commissioners, how are you all? So like Clay mentioned, just a brief update today. We have a nine-to-ten mile transmission line going in Mercer County as part of the Oliver Four-Wing project, or at least we hope to include it as part of the project. From a permit application perspective, we'll be submitting within the next month and a half, so before September twenty-fifth. That's really the update for today. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I just could add this one thing. So the state application will be filed with the, with the North Dakota PSC here as well for the entire project, right? It's two permits, right? Applications, probably the same timeline, probably in early September. The point of interconnect, I'm sure you may have seen that it's under construction right now, that Basin Electric is building that point of interconnection, two miles south of the Leland Old Substation. Yes. We have a fully executed generation interconnection agreement, so nothing to update there. The other big news about this project is the last time we were presenting in front, with you guys, we did not have a customer for the project, but now we do have a customer. I can't divulge who that customer is currently, but that will be forthcoming, so.
And that's coming up State Highway thirty-one corridor roughly?
On both sides, right.
What was that, Jim?
I think they're on both sides of the thirty-one, just south, about two miles south of two hundred eight on thirty-one.
Yes.
That sounds correct.
Up on the hill.
With all the roads in my way.
Yeah. We were just looking at a map yesterday, and I remember thirty-one runs north-south, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, and then, correct.
And is there anything, do you run through our planning and zoning on any permitting? Or is this all PSC and it's more of a, just an update for us?
So the conditional use permit will be going through the planning.
Okay.
Like Sarah mentioned, we're planning on submitting that over the next couple, three weeks to get on the October planning and zoning agenda.
Okay.
And then I think it will come to you shortly after that, maybe in November, I think.
Yeah, I would generally, if, once it goes through and passes P and Z, then their recommendation would come to us, and then conditional use permits would be finally approved by the commission.
And we're expecting potentially a Public Service Commission hearing, maybe in December. That might be a little aggressive, depending upon their schedule, but we remember the PSC staff went last week, they seemed to be thinking that it was okay for that schedule, but we'll see how that plays out.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I guess we'll see at P and Z in a month or so and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
We got a few minutes here. You want to take a, what?
Sure, if we get a couple short things, but we should take a break before.
Okay. I was just going to say, do you want to take a short recess till ten and then come back?
Sure.
Because I'm thinking the next part's gonna. Okay. Well, we're going to recess until ten AM.
Seems like I was supposed to send you something, Dan. Those Next Air guys? Yeah, we were with them yesterday in Oliver, they gave them ten thousand dollars for side radios. So, yeah, so they're gonna.
I was, I was, I was going to say, I was thinking that.
Okay.
And I technically, I wasn't doing anything with that, because I was really not paying for that.
No, right, it's for.
So I was, I was going to send it to me, but all forward to getting it to the center.
Oliver's taking care of the center, yeah. Yeah, so that was it. I know they're taking EAM away from me, but just so you're aware that as soon as that storm hit, the fire chiefs called me, and we were thinking to get sirens up there, so we're getting a grant for that. At both bays, and then also, I talked to some people the other day, and we're going to also try, well, we can get a mitigation grant for shelter, because people don't have anywhere to go. But when they take it away, it'll be out of my hands.
I thought when it came, this is kind of exactly the scenario that you guys have been discussing.
Yes, exactly, except there weren't that many people there, but.
Yeah. Thankfully.
Yes. So, but because of all the flooding and stuff, they got lots of mitigation money, so that'll be a good opportunity to do this. Yeah.
What's, where do they get those monies from?
Well, they're federal.
Okay, so there was, there is federal disaster.
Yeah, they always, you have disaster, they put money aside, and then you apply for them, and then you get, it's a seventy, thirty, or seventy-five, twenty-five.
Was the campsite have been awarded something?
Well, I'm applying and working with the associate, like, Mount Masters, and people associated there. So that's a plus.
I don't know if the schedule will be here or if we're going to executive session. At that point, it'll hold out, but I, I believe by eleven, I've got an appointment, here in Stanton, I've got a separate appointment, so.
I think they want to push it to the end.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, good.
All right, it's ten AM, I'll call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda, we have Darwin Knudsen here. Morning, Darwin.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
See, I'm just one of those taxpayers out here, sitting around in my little prairie dog mound, and we always have concerns, we've lost thirty percent of our buying power out here. These politicians, Washington DC, have polluted with our Federal Reserve and others, and they decided to put a tax on us. It's inflation, they call it, but it's a tax. I am one who sees that as illegal. But anyhow, we're hurting out here, and I'm just here to ask you folks to keep the nobodies out here in mind. Last budget meeting, budget hearing of last year, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, when at the opening comment, one of your first words were, "nobody's here." And it sort of struck a chord with me. And I was sitting out there and I recalled it the other day, and I thought I'd come in here and try and speak for those nobodies a little bit, because I am one of them. You know, I am the welders, the carpenters, I am the concrete finishers, the block players, I am the pipefitters, the plumbers, the boiler makers, the iron workers, the mill rights, and many more. We're out there doing the work. We have for many generations. We built these communities around here, we built the industries, the mines, the power plants, paper, iron ores, the auto industries. I've traveled in over two dozen of these wonderful states of mine, and I've worked with some wonderful people, and we all have the same problem. We've got politicians in our back pocket. And I'd like you folks to take the notice of that, because us nobodies out there are also the payroll clerks, we're the warehousemen, we're the expeditors, we are the purchasing agents, we are the estimators, the schedulers, we are the safety coordinators, the quality assurance representatives and coordinators, we are the project managers and their financial teams. We're the nobodies out there, they're under our fingernails and calluses on our hands, who have made this plush, luxurious, and opulent condition, living conditions here in Mercer County available over the generations. Our grandfathers, our fathers, our mothers, brothers, sisters, and uncles, and aunts, and on and on. And I just want you folks to pay attention to what's going on up here, because what I saw up here at the pre-budget meeting was not allowable. Some of the conduct up here looked abusive and uncalled for, Miss Commissioner Wolf. And I am one, and I am one of the speaking for all of us nobodies out there. You, sir, are fired. That is uncalled for. You verbal abuse, physical posturing, and threats of legal intimidation.
You can't be attacking in your speeches, so.
And the first question I'll, just a minute, Mr. Knudsen.
This is an honorable chamber.
Where in here did I say someone was fired?
You didn't. I just did. I'm your boss. You are fired.
Okay.
Mr. Paperman, we need public debates for these commission chairs next year. Make it happen, because this is unacceptable. I have been on board, I have been in every one of those jobs I listed out. I stepped up to the challenge, I did the bookwork, and I successfully accomplished up to being a project manager with some of the largest companies in this world, and never have I seen such abusive behavior. It's uncalled for. You, sir, need to resign. I seriously want you to resign. Thank you for your efforts.
And I would like for you to, after the meeting, let me know what I did, because you just, you just insinuated, and I have no idea what you're saying.
I will let you know right now.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
You sat there, you sat there and made physical posturing, which is unacceptable towards our, our elected officials. You made verbal abusive statements in, in a, in a, in a atmosphere of unhinged, uncontrollable behavior. You made legal threats to intimidate our elected official with legal action, and it's uncalled for. It's not necessary, you are supposed to be professionals.
Okay, we're done.
Professionals. That's what I had to say. It's uncalled for. Have a good day.
Thanks, Darwin. All right, moving on to other business here. What, what would the commission like to start with? Recorder fees, okay. We have recorder fees of June seven thousand five sixty-eight and August of four thousand eight eighty-nine ninety-five. Is there a motion to accept those?
A motion to accept.
Motion by Jamie to accept the county recorder fees, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Single, go ahead.
I don't, is this a, maybe it was an agenda item, but the way they're worded on here, can it just be simplified as recorder fees next time, and so it's not insinuated that we are going to make motions regarding these items?
And as you point that out too, maybe it should be July fees, because we're not through August yet.
Is it June and July, not June and August?
She had August on, she had August. Okay, so on August second, she had.
It just has the date she completed, and it doesn't say.
And I'm just going by the dates that are on the document, that's what I put.
Yeah, because on this one, she put for June, but I think, I think you're correct, Travis, I think she made a, might have missed putting in for July.
No, July was August second, July recorder fees.
So we did choose.
Forty thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. Four thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. So then she gave us a June this time plus the August.
And she'll do another August, no, later?
No, no, the next one she'll do will be September.
Even though we're not done with August?
Well, and, and when I get them, I go with the date she puts on.
That she puts on the top, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the way it's always been.
Well, I mean, these are the current fees, so I guess, it's kind of irrelevant.
I was gonna say, these would be the. The August fees would be to date, August fees is what I would.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just for clarification, I just noticed that when you asked your question, so. Any other discussion on accepting the county recorder fees? Seeing then, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Although I, that motion is approved. Unless we do the travel reimbursement rates?
Sure.
Um, I think, Liza, you mentioned this a few meetings ago, that they were gonna be increasing?
Correct, yeah.
And they were effective August one?
Yes. Yeah, because it shows prior to August one, the breakfast, lunch, dinner was that, so as of August first, twenty twenty-three, they have increased nine dollars for breakfast, fourteen for lunch, and twenty-two dollars for dinner.
Okay. And no changing to lodging or mileage at this time, it looks like? Because, did we accept the lodging? I don't know if we necessarily.
I think we did mileage, I don't know if.
We did mileage, I don't remember lodging.
I don't remember lodging either.
But I don't know if we have to accept that, that's just the rate we get offered, right? Okay.
We can't adjust.
Because we pay actual extensions on.
On lodging, yes.
I slurred there.
Yeah, I know what you meant. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the state, uh, interstate travel reimbursement rates?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing then, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Although I, that motion passes. Um.
State's attorney here.
Yep, still waiting for state's attorney, um. Updates, social service update, or is that?
No, you're gonna say so.
Nope, go ahead.
You wanna do the social service update?
It kind of ties into my portfolio update, I guess, if you want, that's, whatever, however you wanna do it, but.
Um. Yeah, we can, let's discuss, well, is Jamie gonna do that, your portfolio update?
No, go ahead, and then, then it'll.
The trees up at Beulah Bay?
We could do that, yeah.
There was a a storm event that I don't, I didn't write down the date, but we all know when it was, and uh, there were, pardon?
The night of August first.
Okay. And uh, there was a lot of um, tree damage in the, I'll just say Beulah Bay area, so it, it's all inclusive up there in that whole area. Included Dakota Waters and, I don't even know what, around the Kevern Hafner, what that area is called. But there was a substantial amount of trees down and Kevin Hafner had contacted. I think he contacted several commissioners, but I know I was one of the commissioners he contacted and I went up there and looked things over. And he has allowed uh, his neighbors to pile the trees on his property and he's asking if there's anything we can do to assist him in any way, shape or form. And I did ask, just did a general question, not insinuating anything, I asked, would he allow those trees to be burned on his property, and he said he would. So, with that even in mind, if, he would probably just be asking for some assistance if we could help pile them. He would uh, probably be in charge of the burning, so that wouldn't involve the county. And then he would just ask that we would clean it up afterwards if we could. So, just something to think about, I don't know if we need to do anything today, but. Am I getting pretty close, I think he also talked to.
Another option for that was we could potentially, if it's, I don't know where storm management lies with this, within emergency management. Um, because this area covered Beulah Bay all the way to Hazen Bay and almost basically over to eighteen oh six, I mean, the destruction up there is undescribable, um, talking with Candy with the landfill regarding these trees, there is an option to, she does, um, she likes wood chips. It helps with her roads, it helps with covered garbage, um, so that was another thing discussed with Candy, if, if it could be, you know, we do have a chipper through the county, if it's something we can look at. Just, yeah, I mean, the Hafners were kind enough to allow their neighbors to dump in a location that kept everybody's storm cleanup moving, especially after we got another two inches of rain. Um, the landfill would have not been allowed to have individuals dumped there because of the mud, so. It's, the destruction out there is in, yeah, no words.
So you're looking at options?
Options, if, if there, if there are any, um, that's kind of what Kevin came came to us with, is, is there any options, um, under emergency management, this was, I had, you know, reached out, Carmen had said it was an infrastructure thing and the cities could apply for funding. Um, so I did reach out then to Dunn County to ask what they would do in this situation. She said I would find a general location to pile the trees and that's actually when Mr. Hafner had reached out. So, it kind of all worked together, it was already being done, so I don't know what, what our options are.
Right, and just for.
Can I speak?
Yeah, just a second.
As the emergency manager?
I just wanted to make one clarification to the general public, is, this was not a um, commission decision to place these, where these trees were going. This was a private individual who uh, made this decision on his own. He just has asked the county, if the county could assist him in disposal of these trees in some manner. Go ahead.
Okay, the only thing like, you know, we exercised for this and I right away talked to Beulah Fire, Hazen Fire. And we're gonna get sirens up there, but the other thing that came up the other day was storm shelters. We were lucky, nobody got hurt because there weren't a lot of people up there. But the thing is, you know, we get storm shelters, but as far as EM, EM is state and federal. And if our local resources in a disaster are used up, yes, then we reach out to state and local. With the mitigation grants, when we have that spring flooding and stuff, that's when they get monies for those mitigation grants. So right now, we're looking at both the siren for both Hazen and Beulah Bays for that safety, and then for the storm shelters. And that's what the EM does and uses. But as far as what you guys are doing, that's your decision, how much you wanna use county money for, but that isn't, you know, if, if I was supposed to be up there and it was a disaster, both fire, Terry, both the fire chiefs that had called me and I called them too, I said, you know, did you think I'd do this, no.
Okay, so on Jamie's question, there's nothing through emergency management, but if, the commission is.
Only shelters and the pre-planning to protect. So there's nothing with storm cleanup within emergency management? No, not yet.
So it would have to be something we'd allocate as a commission? Through general funds?
I guess I got a different opinion.
So we'll just, I'm not asking, I myself am not asking for a decision today.
No.
But um, probably um, keep in contact with Kevin.
So, I just had a quick question, Carmen, so when you bring out like lunches for like the fire departments when they're fighting fires and stuff like that, where does that monies come from?
That would be actually the Red Cross.
Red Cross?
But it has to be like five, it's a countywide fire, it's not just one department. You gotta have at least two, and normally we have about five and it's a prolonged fire. And then I call the Red Cross and they always cover that.
Okay.
Same with this, if any of these needed, they can always call Red Cross. If your home gets flooded, whatever, or flooding is a bigger thing, but like, let's say you have a fire at your house, you call Red Cross and they will help you you know, find another place to live there, get clothes, whatever, they'll help you, that's what they're there for.
Okay, so that's where that monies came from?
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. Okay.
And I did ask Ken about the chipper, and I forgot what diameter maximum can go through that chipper, there is a maximum, we can't
Okay.
Run like a fourteen inch log through there.
No, but.
So, but it, it is definitely a, an option. That we could probably.
I think from what I saw, like, a lot of landowners up there, they were cutting into smaller loads because they had smaller trailers, they had, I mean.
It was their ability.
It was their ability to get it in and out, and I mean, those trees are, they were big trees that came down on.
Now, from what I observed, and I did walk through the pile of trees, or that, it's, if no one has seen it, you gotta go up there and drive by, it is quite the acreage that's covered in trees, uh, broken down trees that are laying on his land now. And I think a majority of them would fit through the chipper, I'm just saying, it's, there is a, there is a maximum. But uh, yeah, that is definitely an option. I guess another option would be trying to coordinate something to even just haul the trees to the landfill. Chip them, burn them, I guess all the above are options.
I just somewhat feel that these are our county residents, whether it's Hazen Bay, Beulah Bay, Dakota Waters, it's, there are our county residents that need assistance, so. They're taxpaying citizens that need assistance, so.
And we had a private individual who was kind enough to allow his neighbors to dump their trees on his land in a it's almost an emergency situation, but and I think we can we should be able to do something here in the near future.
So, sounds like you two kind of have the most on it, would one of you be willing to look into the options and bring it forward to the commission? I don't know if we necessarily create a committee or anything like that, but just, um, what it would cost to do the chipping and disposal and I don't know if there'd be any permits or anything.
Well, I did talk to Diana with the state environmental and she also got on board air quality control and there is some different things if, if burning were to take place, but it's also if it's private resident, there's just different options depending on what our option is, so.
Right, if we, as a county, we have to get, go through all the fire permitting?
Yes.
Just something to keep in mind if we do do that. I'm more apt to go with the chipping thing, but then we will have to have county um, employees there, when that thing runs, we can't hand out that chipper to the best of my knowledge.
I, I don't think we can allow county equipment.
And maybe it can be looked at as a winter project also. When.
So.
Okay.
I think between Jamie and I.
We'll continue.
Come up with something. Or some suggestion anyway.
A suggestion, okay. Sounds like a plan, um.
I appreciate you two being there for the community too, and trying to see what you can do to resolve this, so.
Okay, um.
We could go on to social.
Social services, okay.
Um, part of, Jim had asked, there is a dumpster that was dropped off over at the social services building, but as far as we're aware and we've, we've paid utilities, there's no no monies has been given, and Carmen, I asked you yesterday and you said.
Texted him two days.
And you haven't heard back?
He hasn't, yeah.
Okay.
I'll try again.
Not just to remove county property?
He's gonna.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So the gentleman.
Got you, got you.
And I talked to him before and he's talked to Johnny and that dumpster is what he requested from the city.
Yeah.
And then Johnny said, it won't be charged, you know, till the end of month. But I texted him the other day saying, can you give us a timeframe when you're gonna come in and pay and take ownership?
Right.
And they haven't gone.
Okay.
Out of the social service building?
Yes, yes.
Because I see it's still for sale on the website.
Well.
I mean, I suppose until it pays, yeah.
Right, got it, understood. It's not purchased yet.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, no, no exchange of monies or a deed has been done at this point. Okay, anything else on social service building?
No, that was just it, just to, just because it hasn't been.
Okay. Um, Vanguard, I know we've talked about this a couple times, um. I just uh, didn't know if the commission was ready to move forward on any of that, or if, or if we wanted to wait until final budget approval. Um, I just thought I'd keep it in the front of everybody's mind, knowing that um, once we enter into it, um, I think they're estimating it would be all complete in twenty twenty-six. And um, they would bill us based on um, time into it as it goes forward, so. It's a little bit difficult to, to budget for, but I I believe we had it in the preliminary budget, I don't remember us taking that out.
No, well.
Okay, we had some monies in.
The preliminary budget, there was a hundred thousand put in into Cindy's budget.
Okay.
For that.
So there, currently there is some funding in there, and I don't, I don't know if they would bill us anything this year or not, but. So, I don't know if you guys wanna sit on that for another meeting, I just thought I'd bring it up, um, knowing that we had talked about it and, um.
Well, I'd like to move forward with the, the position we are in right now with our budget, I think we need to wait to see what our bottom line is in our budget before we.
Is there a way we can find out if they plan, would plan, we'd have bill us yet this year for it, if it were put in a motion?
I could have Cindy ask if there would be any, any fee in.
Maybe for the next meeting and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just didn't want us to forget about it, so.
No, we are not forgetting about it, that's for sure.
So let's put it on, uh, the next agenda, and then I'll have Cindy look into that. Other business, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, we can keep it on there until we make a decision under other business every meeting, yeah, okay.
Yep.
And we'll address that at every meeting, got it?
Alright. Um, I don't see Todd yet.
He's right there.
Oh, there he is, sorry. Quiet.
Oh, I was just gonna text him. Suppose I'd have got a reply.
Yeah. Um. Do we wanna talk about the road change order first? That was the one that was um, brought up when we were talking in the minutes. Because we didn't make a decision on that, right? The change order for the John Shields Bridge?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
For the what?
For the.
Nine thousand some dollars at John Shields Bridge, company was.
Oh.
You mentioned it when we were going through the minutes.
Yes.
Nine thousand three hundred fifty cents.
That, we were. Were we waiting on our attorney on that one?
I don't know if we were or not. Do you remember Todd discussing uh, when Ken and Charlie were in here?
He wasn't.
Todd wasn't here?
Todd wasn't here, okay, so on the John Shields Bridge, um, the contractor had requested a little, little under ten thousand dollars in a change order for using muck, he called it muck, but um, basically Charlie's um, said that he didn't, he didn't agree with it and didn't accept it. Uh, it still comes to the commission, if the commission approves it, um, because um, the county engineer didn't agree with it, it would be all on the counties, it wouldn't be eligible for the federal highway administration cost share. And also with that project, there was liquidated damages because they were past their substantial completion date, um, by somewhere around nine or ten days. And there was liquidated damages that were approximately about the same value.
I'm not familiar with the contract, apparently that was signed off before I came on board, we've been waiting on this, this long, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, liquidated damages, um, there are exceptions that will postpone it. Um, first of all, liquidated damages, um, there are exceptions that will postpone it, such as weather and things of that sort. I don't know that we're in liquidated damages without reading the clause itself. Did Charlie explain why this muck process is unacceptable?
So.
It's just something highway department, US funds for the highway department say, no, you can't use it.
So when you are building roads, if it's classified as muck, it's not, um, classified as something that you can fill or use as fill. Um, it's basically organics and other issues like that. They did pull up a significant amount of wet material, um, but they only spent about three hours trying to dry it and then threw it back in. Um, it was never brought to the attention of the construction observation person or the engineer prior to substantial completion. It was brought up after, uh, substantial completion was accepted.
That makes sense in a way, that wouldn't be approved then.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's another product called muck that actually has Portland mixed into it that works very well, so. I don't know if they've used that lately, uh, and as you folks know, my construction experience is back when we used stones and chisel hammers. Not saying I'm old, but today I'm feeling older than I am. Well, if our engineer's not gonna sign off on it, that's a problem. The contract says he's supposed to do it, uh, the way the engineer is requiring, that would be on the contractor. But again, these are just.
Our engineer.
Estimates without having read the contract itself.
Our engineer has recommended that we don't pay it, in a nutshell.
He was pretty adamant about, I mean.
So that's why we wanna.
I can see the contract and I can give you a firm answer.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't think we're under any pressing thing, I just.
I'm just thinking out loud here and if it doesn't meet the spec generally, it's not something we have to pay for. If it exceeds the spec, that's a different story. If there's an exception someplace within the contract, that changes the story once again, so without the actual contract, I can't give you a firm opinion.
Okay.
Okay, we want you to review it, if, we're asking you to review it for us.
Yes.
If you can get that to me today, I will be working on it today and tomorrow.
And I.
Okay.
Since we're on meeting.
Postpone that.
Since we're on these same meeting minutes and Marvin is here, do we want to make a comment about the motion that was?
Oh, yeah, um, and I believe.
In the other second meeting and then Marvin sent us a correction email on August fifth.
Yeah, your comment on the point of order that Gene couldn't vote against the, the motion that he made. He can't talk against it, but he can still vote against it, you sent an email, uh, a couple of days after the fact, so.
Do you want any comment on that?
No, we're just kind of, um, you, you had clarification, so.
During, during the process, Gene made a motion to approve, when it came time to vote, he voted no. I said, I believe that's a point of order and I asked the chairman that he can't vote no because he made a motion to approve, you agreed. Subsequent to that, Gene sent me a letter and I looked it up myself and Gene was correct, he could indeed vote no. He just could not talk against it. When I received that letter, I sent a letter to all the board members and apologized for my error.
Yeah, and then that's why we brought it up, just so for future reference if that happens again, then.
And thank you for that, Marvin, it was very, yes.
And just so we're clear going forward, point of legality, a board member, applies the same for legislatures, congress and any other such body. A person can bring a motion for the purpose of voting it down. That, that, there is no prohibition that if you bring a motion, second emotion and what have you, that you can't vote what you think is correct. That would be an unreasonable result.
Yeah, that's basically just the clarification, so if we come up to that situation again, we're all privy on, on the process.
Get back to our, our bridge thing in the minutes. It does say that, that, uh, nine thousand three hundred forty-one dollar and fifty cents was tabled.
Yep.
Until more information is gathered and the state's attorney has a chance to look at it. So it was not tabled to a specific, it was tabled.
Mm-hmm.
But we can, uh, leave that until the next meeting.
Yeah.
So if you could put it on through the agenda.
Do you wanna under other things, or do you want a specific time?
Um, if, uh, if the road department, if the road department's here.
If the road department's coming in next time?
Okay, I'm gonna put it down at ten, that's where their time is.
Okay.
Yeah. But my point is we don't need a motion then, because it was on a specific date.
Correct. Okay, um, Tyler Financial Software contract, since we got Todd up there. You've reviewed that contract and any issues with the Tyler software?
I worked with, uh, Ron from Tyler Technologies to change some things that absolutely could not be in there, such as trying to require the county to indemnify them. Yes, we can do it, but we don't have insurance coverage, um, they had language in there, this is just one item. Ron made some adjustments, um, I don't see anything that legally prohibits it. The other items of the contract, and did have some questions about logistics. If they have to come on site, uh, there's travel expenses. Uh, I did and I have not gotten an answer back. Ron indicated he thinks it can be done that way and if they're gonna come to North Dakota from Texas and they're gonna meet with Mercer County and, uh, any of the other eleven counties that look like they're going to go with this. Um, if they can split the travel up so we don't have to foot the whole bill. Reminded them that would be very inappropriate if they're billing one trip eleven times for the same trip.
And my concern too would be is if it's like an open-ended, I don't much care for that, so you're gonna make fifteen trips up here and bill us every time. But also with that said, it's, I don't wanna end up where they say, well, we only, uh, put in our, um, bid ten trips. So we're not coming up anymore.
Well, in that regard, the intention is in the contracts worded that reflects that, um, Tyler's been doing this for some time. They, their intent is reflected in the contract that this will be done primarily remotely. And the computers, um, little story from my private practice days. My, my IT guy, um, created some software and hardware for veteran cemeteries. And they put this into veteran cemeteries all across the world. I was having some problems, I called him, he says, I got my computer on, accept my invite and he's messing with it. And I'm watching him do and add and fix and all of that and I hear some noises that do not sound appropriate from an office. So I asked Mr. Brad Kramer, just where are you? I'm on the beach in Guam, uh, our flight got delayed a couple of days and me and the wife are just enjoying the beach. Uh, so the ability to do most of these things remote with software can be done. On the travel, it's mainly going to be if it's requested, so that we do have a control on doing that. He's indicated that, um, if they have to come up, they're gonna try to schedule these trips so they can make more than one customer's service onsite. I, as an attorney and taxpayer, I always like it when they spend taxpayer dollars with something definitive, but the nature of this. My job is legal advisors tell you what's legal, what's not legal and let you make the decision as to where you wanna go. I don't see anything illegal about it, but I'm a true conservative, I hate wasting money, whether it's mine years or strangers. The cost is, uh. Let's just say the cost was surprising.
I guess.
Go ahead, Gene.
I shouldn't have probably said trips here, I should say, you know, um, to complete the project.
I believe in most of it without being here, it's from the way Ron's represented to me and I understand that's always representative to the, uh, folks that are gonna be working with this, with the software.
In that regard, cause Tyler is the only software I've ever heard about in my time here, is that our best option, most financially sound option? Is there any other option?
Cindy, Dawn, Gwen, everybody agrees, this is what's gonna work.
There was one other firm, but they no longer serve us in North Dakota.
Okay.
There was, there was a secondary service and as far as the expenditures on it, um, I believe our intent was to use the ARPA funds for it. So it's not, it's not tax money, it's not general revenue, it was the ARPA funds that we received. We used, um, those to do some upgrades to the building and disqualified, um, under acceptable uses for that ARPA money. And that's why, um, we were pursuing that and then also in previous audits, it was a recommendation by the audits that we update our financial software. So it was recommended, it's not county taxpayer funds, it's ARPA funds that are eligible, so.
Not opposed to it, it's just questions that have been asked and.
Mm-hmm. And then just, I guess, one more time for maybe clarity, um. ARPA funds, how much did we make available for this, um, Tyler Financial Software contract and how much was the contract?
Going off of memory, it was, we had budgeted somewhere two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand.
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Last year.
Okay.
Okay. And the contract was.
About two hundred and eleven thousand.
Contract was about two eleven?
Yeah, it was under two fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was within our budget.
Okay, just.
Within the ARPA.
Put it out there publicly.
Yeah.
I know we covered these fees once before, but I like covering them over and over, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, is there a motion to, um, accept the Tyler software contract and, um, proceed?
And that's the one you sent to us in the email?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the Tyler Financial Software contract.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
One second.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
And the updated contract with changes from Todd will be had before it's signed?
I believe those are put in, I have not seen it, I've just gotten Ron's assurances of it.
Okay.
Now, for example, some of the things, just so you know what was in there, the standard contract has us indemnifying unless it's prohibited by state law. It's not exactly prohibited by state law, but it's prohibited by our insurance carrier, which is a quasi-state agency. I don't wanna get into hair splitting in a dispute, so my stance has always been it's out. There was no pushback on that, when I explained why, accepted immediately. There was a few other small items, clarifications, things of this sort. The travel, um, I did question that, but as the way I see it, is that we're not gonna have Tyler Technology all of a sudden deciding we need to boost revenues this quarter. So we're going to Mercer County, we're going to Marvin County or whatever other counties are doing this and billing multiple trips on one trip. So they're not gonna be double dipping, um, so, um, I would just advise, be very judicious when we do request them onsite.
Okay.
Okay, so a pointed question, are you okay with the contract as is now?
I don't see anything legally that causes me to consent.
Okay. Otherwise I would amend our motion upon approval of the, um, state's attorney.
I've already signed off and then both by Carmen and Ron, but.
Okay.
With those changes, I would sign off.
Okay.
So there would be nothing for me to sign today, we still need, is there a revision or?
Uh, I haven't got the revised copy.
Okay, but we could approve it in contingent on.
Changes actually being in there because we now have multiple copies that are floating around.
Mm-hmm, I, I just wanna make sure we have the right one.
Yeah, it has to be that one, cause that's this final one he sent to you. So Todd, uh, do you wanna send Todd it or are you gonna let me give it to him, cause I got a copy of it too.
All I got is a signature.
I, I just did that, cause it's eighty-four pages.
No, I understand.
Took a jet, printed your one out, but I can definitely get you a copy too along with that Golden Valley Bridge one.
Yeah, it belongs to me.
Looking over, but.
I'm not gonna promise I'm gonna have them done this week with, uh, kind of court scheduled, but, um, I should have them for you early next week, the latest.
Okay.
Should be pretty quick to check to make sure the, the changes that I pointed out.
Okay, so if we approve it, then I'll wait for your word to sign it?
Yeah, you could, you could do this approval pending state's attorney assuring all changes are included in the final copy. So it would be approved pending an email from me, uh, to avoid public issues, I would send it to the chairman and to the auditor and the treasurer.
Okay. So do we need to amend your motion?
Then?
So that.
Right. So I, I move to.
Make it pretty basic and just say, I'll make a motion to amend. To final, uh, approval of the state's attorney.
You're gonna make that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to amend by Gene, is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion on the amendment, um, waiting for, um, review by, by the state's attorney?
Okay, so that's what you're adding?
That's what we're adding.
One is motion to amend, say it again.
State's attorney review.
Final approval.
Yep.
Final approval by state's.
By the state's attorney.
Yeah.
So if he, he approves it, then we have approved it in our original motion.
Got it.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll, um, vote on the amendment, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion, um, for amendment is approved. Now the, um, main motion to approve the Tyler contract, um, as amended with, um, state's attorney's review for final acceptance. Is there any more discussion on that motion?
A quick legal point on that is that till we've got it. I trust Ron's got everything in there that I want, but if they don't, we don't want something approved that all of a sudden I become the final, as the state's attorney, the final approving. In fact, the only one who can approve contracts, expenditures is this board. So with that, then I would say, once I get through that, then approve it. I know it's taking time, but, um, we don't want something, as Gene has, uh, has mentioned many times, historically sensitive, doesn't want something that the commission in twenty years looks back at this and say, what the heck were they thinking? So what I would ask is just if you can pass the amendment and then I'll get to it, you'll have it by the next meeting for sure.
So then tamble the motion till the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Post, postpone.
Whatever you wanna call it.
Another way of saying table.
Yeah, another way of saying table. Uh, it's actually a motion, so we would probably call it tabling. Um, so is there a motion to table, this motion for the Tyler software approval to the next meeting?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Gene, second by Jamie to table, uh, tabling generally does not have discussion, so Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye as well, that motion has been tabled to the next meeting, um, please put that on the agenda, Carmen.
Okay, do we want a time or is it on a, on the public?
I think it would be another. Yeah. All right, um, then we have, um, the sheriff's coroner, coroner and medical director MOU contract.
Um, just because we did have it in last meeting minutes about me being the assistant coroner, um, we did look, I, we talked to Todd, talked to Terry. Um, the century code reads if the coroner's unavailable, the sheriff is next in line.
next in line, I will be a delegate of the sheriff as well as any others he delegates. So, payment will not come out of coroner's budget for those services.
And legally, the way that makes sense is that this board is not appointing the coroner's deputy. Frankly, the coroner should appoint their deputy. Statute says if we don't have a coroner, it's the sheriff. Um, that may have worked back in early statehood real well, but medical science and legal requirements with medical science have greatly increased where we need professionals who have the right letters behind their name, M D R N, things of this sort. Interesting read of a book that was written about a case from nineteen thirty-seven in Mercer County called Don't Dare Call Her A Liar has recently been published, I would highly recommend reading it. Uh, it's about a murder that occurred here in Mercer County. And they had a coroner, um, who was a doctor and his son, who was a dentist, was the deputy coroner, which opened up part of the case. Pray to God we don't have this and we have murder, current day, it is any autopsies are performed by the state lab, so we don't have coroners doing autopsies here in Mercer County at this time like they did in nineteen thirty-seven. But statute is read for decades and decades that if there's not a coroner, it's part of the sheriff's duties. Any why sheriff is gonna get somebody with the medical acronyms to be their designate so that they're not doing anything other than preserving evidence and getting it to the appropriate person. So, uh, this is fully legal, doesn't violate any statutes, doesn't violate any conflict of interest requirements because this board is not approving who the coroner is, um, merely we informed that the sheriff has made Jamie the designate. And we'll throw in that she's done a fantastic job as our jail nurse.
Well, that's your opinion.
I can back my opinion.
Some people probably don't like it.
Not have any, any medical complaints, any lawsuits.
Thanks, Jean.
See, I like, I like things boring, since we've been covering it as jail nurse.
I know she's done a fantastic job.
Excited about anything that didn't or did happen at the jail regarding the medical.
But even though I made that snide remark, I do have to say I have not heard any negative out of Sheriff's Barnwood for uh, her, the work she's doing, so.
At times she's been the calming factor, which medically is helpful, makes Kent's job as jail administrator under Terry Louie easier.
So then with there is no problem with the contract?
The contracts?
No.
So the sheriff's coroner and medical director MOU contracts are accurate and?
Yep.
You feel legal?
Yeah, I haven't looked at them in the last two weeks, but Terry hasn't made any changes. And obviously, if something inadvertently got through due to getting it printed in the file, we can always come back and change it. The doc has been fantastic and this county should say a prayer of thanks that this man is willing to step up. The peanuts that he's being paid, um, we're getting a fantastic financial deal.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the coroner contract?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion on the sheriff coroner contract? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, and then is there a motion to approve the medical director MOU contract?
Oh, my, motion to approve the medical director MOU contract.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Fifteenth today or sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
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 So Jamie, now that he's signed, are you gonna make sure that they get them back? Because Dr. Casper has the signals too?
Yeah.
And then once they're signed, then I'll just keep a copy.
I can coordinate them with him.
All right, um, county budget, any discussion on that?
No, just that I, um, had requested from Carmen if we could get the new salaries when she said that she was gonna do the dollar fifty.
Yeah.
I am. Right, if we could get a, a copy of that, she said she would work on that for us.
That spreadsheet one?
Yes, yep.
And I did ask for the handwritten transmittals and I think she got copies for everybody.
For everybody and this is what, this is exactly what the department has handed in, so then you have all their comments and things. So the department had one as the first one and then the second one is all of my budgets, uh, for, under the auditor and they're my little things, so they're not like.
Any other discussion on the?
Under the, uh, county road, which is on page ten of the, the, um, membership. All right. The membership dollar amounts is six twenty-five, the road department has them for me, that needs to be eighteen hundred. And/or, that's what they also requested.
County road, what was the line item?
On, membership under expenditures, about halfway down the page. It's six twenty-five, that needs to be eighteen hundred, one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
And then under software services, we have to have five hundred dollars there, there's nothing. That is actually the load pass, um, annual fee.
And do we need to keep load pass still?
Pardon?
Load pass still needs to stay in effect?
That's the overweight.
And that was fifteen hundred?
Five hundred.
Oh, five hundred, sorry. That's what I asked.
And, let's see, I.
There's another one, I have a building and grounds. I have to try and do. Um, page six. Under general. Jim did say building and grounds was eight hundred and twenty-five instead of eight hundred and fifteen and that was in the other packet we had from before. Um, halfway, about a quarter way down, building and grounds line?
Yep.
Jim had eight hundred and twenty-five.
And not the eight.
Instead of eight fifteen.
Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand even?
And if, and if I may, say I, I'm, I'm requesting the numbers I gave you to be put in the budget and then we, I know we'll have to make adjustments. And I, I guess the same would be for that eight twenty-five that Jamie just mentioned. Because both of these are increases, so we'll have to make some cuts somewhere, but we understand that.
Mm-hmm.
I have, uh, clerk of court has indicated there's, um, the auditor, uh, state's attorney.
No, eight hundred and twenty-five, one fifty.
One fifty.
And give me an update. It doesn't need to be today.
Update on exactly what, make sure I'm on the same page.
On your budget. On your budget numbers.
What I presented at the, uh, previous meeting, the only changes that I requested.
Kind of circling, I'm kinda circling you because I already talked with your staff and so they'll update you also, sorry. Don't mean to backdoor you, but.
Did they let you know what I?
Yep.
My rationale for what I requested?
Yep, yep, but I asked them to redo it, so.
I think once we have the salaries, it'll make.
I know the end of getting.
This time, you don't order my staff.
What's that?
I'll let it go this time because.
I asked your staff.
Carmen, I just wanna make sure you heard that the building and grounds is eight twenty-five, one fifty?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
I know, I don't know that your staff.
Um, there wasn't, um, I think the numbers were flat, but I think the amount, total amount stayed the same.
Where are you looking at?
I don't know, I got, I had it written somewhere, I wasn't really expecting us to go through this.
And then. Okay, so we're gonna get an updated salary budget report that'll, that'll show us the dollar fifty per hour?
Right, and not see where we did this, but.
That's in here?
I want, I want the one that reflects the one fifty.
Right, and what I'm gonna do is add it and then keep everything else, so we got three percent, seventy-five cents, a dollar, and then I'm gonna add in the dollar fifty, so you want all four of those options?
Well, I want at least a dollar fifty.
Okay.
Yep.
Because you wanna.
And then, I do have a question like for, uh, Mr. Wolf, he happens to be on line one here, on the one I'm looking at for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Jean Wolf, and it says the current salary, one thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents, how did you? What, what increase did you estimate and how did you calculate?
That current is what you're making right now.
Correct, but for, uh, next year's, um, estimate, how did you, what, what did you use to calculate?
Actually, I, I did use this, but you're talking for a dollar fifty?
Yeah, whatever you.
Whatever increase, you just wanna know how you calculated it.
Across, okay, so for an increase of a dollar, you get an extra five hundred and twenty per hour? And then your, your estimated increase then with the dollar, look at the twenty thousand, three fifteen, fifty-six.
Okay.
So that's what you're looking at if you increase it a dollar and then you got the same with the seventy-five cents and the three percent. And then once I put the dollar fifty, it would be the same thing, just to show you.
So how many hours did you figure for?
I would say.
Mister Wolf?
Five hundred and twenty? Doesn't show it on there, but because you do a dollar per hour and your increase is five twenty, then I'm showing you guys are five hundred and twenty.
So five.
Per month.
So five hundred and twenty hours?
Huh?
You estimate five hundred and twenty hours?
Yeah.
Annually?
No, no, I believe that's monthly.
No.
Has to be.
So do we?
No, because there's only a hundred and seven.
Your salary, so they divide it as well.
Do we have the option to have another?
It wouldn't be five twenty.
We can? I, I was understanding that's what we were gonna do last time, to, to go through these all the numbers, where we're whittling down, where we're not, is that another meeting to come? That is my understanding, but are we going to do that because?
Well, we also have to have the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we'll do the public hearing and then based on public comment, we can.
Then we'll go after, right?
We'll go after that.
Do we make, like we're doing now, make changes now or is that?
I think we just make these noted and then my recommendation would be wait until after the public hearing portion. Because I don't wanna have twelve different changes.
That's why, that's what I was wanting, if we're not, it wasn't prepared.
Right, these are just kind of like notices and I wouldn't actually change anything yet.
So what do you guys, whatever changes you want, I can make it and then put it in this? Let's say you are certain changes you want and then at least we, we still have this as original, but you have an updated one?
And like the.
These changes you just gave me?
The change that I said for Jim?
Yeah.
Was in this original packet you gave us at budget meeting, but it wasn't in this, it was different in this preliminary.
Because those changed with the, those are based on the July twenty-fifth. The one you got before that was before that, that came strictly off their budgets. And I'm not saying that, you know, there might have been an error, whatever, but.
Right, and maybe it was just a typo.
Yeah, but this is everything from what happened at the July twenty-fifth meeting.
And that's why I asked for the handwritten ones, just because department heads were saying that numbers appeared different, so that's.
Okay.
Typos happen and so we just, but I don't know that we are prepared.
Time to digest.
Okay, yes, since we just got these.
And then at one point, I get all your changes and when you guys are ready, I'll make you another one. And then you can compare and you can see, and if you need to, you know, you can have a special.
Yeah, and I think.
We have it on public hearing.
Did we set that?
Before you have. Yeah, you guys set it on eleven o'clock on October, October.
I think we should have it before that. Because we aren't gonna have time to digest everything from the public hearing, so I think we should adjust that date to soon, sometime in September.
Yes.
So we'll have time to go through whatever the public would like to request.
Yeah, all right.
I've seen, and maybe it doesn't need to be a special meeting, but I've seen some of the other counties do like a work group meeting. Is, and maybe, maybe it's the same as a special meeting, but maybe it's something to that to digest the numbers and maybe that's not a possibility, I've just seen what I've observed in other counties.
Now, you got the sixth in the county, but like you're saying, Jamie, can you test me public because you're all.
No, it, their work group meetings are published and they're open to the public. It's just, and maybe it's called work group instead of a special meeting.
As long as we've got it recorded.
But it is published in public.
Yeah, we just got notified the paper.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
They have a meeting, that's an official meeting that we have.
And my other thought was, is, do we think in order to try to include as many public who would like to come as if we had it in a?
Evening meeting.
Right.
For the public hearing?
Okay, rehash the.
The public meeting be a evening meeting.
Oh!
To rehash the deadline dates? October when? Do we have to have the sun by?
I wanna say it's October tenth, I believe.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
So I think we're thinking like near the end of September, having the public hearing and then probably like at a five o'clock or something?
That's.
You're like the twentieth?
But I'll, I'll be gone that week. I mean, you guys can definitely have the meeting, but I will be gone.
Oh, yeah, I gotta start looking at my calendar now.
So the evening, you're looking at what time? Seven, sorry.
In my head, I was thinking like five, five-thirty, but.
I guess all I say, you know, they'll be hungry then. I'm just saying, but it's up to you, whatever you wanna do.
If you're gonna need me for that, um, I have plans to be out a few days before the Sunday, the seventeenth and a few days after. I became a great uncle here recently and there's a christening in Wisconsin, I am not missing. Besides, I gotta go spoil a little cow.
It is a church night, Jamie, we went to a different, not Wednesday. Now that school started, first party.
Gotta pull up the calendar, start scratching dates off that don't work.
What about September fourteenth?
The week of the twenty-fourth, I'm not here. I'm in California.
What days did you say you were gonna be gone, Todd?
Um, I'm leaving, depending on a couple of things that are coming up with work, there's some things I might be doing work related there, but, um, I'm trying to leave like on the Thursday or after the commission meeting on the Wednesday and coming back, or after court on Wednesday. Uh, and coming back, so I'd be back here Wednesday.
Of what week are you talking about?
So the seventeenth is a Sunday.
Oh, gotcha.
Fourteenth through the nineteenth.
So if we did it on the fourteenth.
Few days before the weekend, and a few days after the weekend.
So he's leaving the fourteenth?
And Liza's gone.
He's leaving the fourteenth?
You're leaving the, how about like the twelfth, like the Tuesday? Or Monday, eleventh?
I just, I have an airport board meeting.
When is, when is, when are you not available, Liza?
The week of, whoops.
The seventeenth?
The eighteenth through the twenty-second, I have that mandatory training, I have to be out.
And that boxes up to the tenth through the fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm thinking the twelfth is probably.
The best?
The best.
That's what I'm.
Twelve?
Twelfth works for me, thirteenth does not.
Twelve, okay.
But that week, the only day. The only day it doesn't work for me is the thirteenth, that week.
I need to do two weeks' notice in the paper.
Is the thirteenth a regular commission meeting?
No.
No.
But you've got, you said you're leaving after court.
August sixteenth, so.
Right, right, so.
Should be able to do it. That's next week's paper.
Regular meeting would be the twentieth.
Right.
Yeah.
Did we have a time?
I think it's through that.
Five? If we want an evening, fi- or five thirty?
I'd say five thirty, twelfth to five thirty.
Twelfth to five thirty?
I just wanna make sure that the community is.
Oh, absolutely, that, that's a great idea.
Five thirty? On, on September twelfth?
Oh, Dan's gone.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make sure he, he'll get, you know, the notes, and then I gotta put, I'll put a notice in the paper.
Paper?
For three weeks before, and then they'll know.
Okay, but we need to make a motion that.
Absolutely, we do.
We have the public hearing for our budget on Sep- Tuesday, September twelfth at five thirty P M.
And that's the motion by you, Liza?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Liza to have the public hearing for the budget, September twelfth at five thirty P M, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing done, Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All would aye, that motion passes. Okay. Anything else on budget relation stuff right now?
No, I think it's just helpful to have the handwritten stuff.
Yeah, and we're gonna keep the notes.
And can we make sure Rick, um, gets a copy of that, as well as the?
Actually, I've got it right here.
Okay.
Is anybody gonna see him before? Yeah, just let him know.
Travis, do you guys have P and Z or anything coming up?
We have P and Z tomorrow, but I don't know, based on his comment, I don't know if he made that to you then.
Can we just drop?
All contacts, and then I'll let him know, like, if he's ready.
And then.
Leave my office.
And then you'll have those salary sheets for us?
I'll get them, yeah, I think I can email out to you.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay, alright.
But as soon as I can, and then I'm gonna keep notes of what we made here, but then I'm waiting for you guys to give me more stuff, and then.
What time? What time is that?
Then I'll do the big update.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
You missed it, Dan.
The what?
We're gonna have the big, uh, public hearing for the budget, September twelfth in the evening, five thirty.
Okay.
Separate, we're only mapping it to Tuesday.
September twelfth?
At five thirty, yeah.
I know, sorry. We left a lot of dates.
We'll see, I'll, I'll work around and try to, I, I mean, I'm, the evening, I'm usually done with the paper between five thirty and six, when I gotta get here. So I might be late, but hopefully I can just work ahead enough to, that's not.
Sorry, I wasn't even thinking about that, Dan.
Five thirty here.
Okay, anything else on budget?
Were there any other motions made, or any motions made on those things that were adjustments?
No, nothing at this time. Okay, uh, let's do portfolio updates quick.
Look at that, yeah.
Put it on the next one.
What are you guys doing, portfolio updates?
Portfolio, Jean, do you have any portfolio updates?
Uh, I do, but save it for later.
Save you for later, gotcha.
I might a little bit from the road department, I gotta find my notes, so I may not find my notes. Hopefully I do.
I can just go if you want.
Sure, go ahead, Jamie.
Then, I don't have much, I need to meet with Buster now that school's starting, cause school starts next week. Um, otherwise, we'll talk to all social services, landfill, nothing, it all, it kinda depends if we do anything with. I really don't have anything, to be honest.
Okay, well, I am now.
Um, I wasn't able to make the airport meeting, it was just happening when I was on vacation, but they are working on an A L P kickoff meeting that they're gonna have next Tuesday to discuss the improvements that are gonna be done, hopefully at the airport. Um, the ambulance, we met last night, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, according to House Bill thirteen sixty-five, the legislature has, um, made it so that, let me read it here, simplified the process of establishing a rural ambulance service district, and made it a requirement for all rural territory to, unless explicitly exempt, organize a district prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So what they called it was, um, a taxing district. And there's a whole bunch of different steps that are included in that, they'd have to form a committee, and, um, they're just starting to learn about it right now, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that House Bill, um, thirteen sixty-five put that in motion. Um, they're also looking at possibly ordering another new ambulance, even though the other one hasn't shown up yet, just because it's taking so long to get one. So they're looking into the different agencies that might be able to have that, and they're also looking into an F S A or H S A for their employees as well. So that going on with the ambulance. And that's what I have for my updates.
Okay. Um, for my updates, uh, planning and zoning is tomorrow evening, um, so typical ongoing with planning and zoning. Um, yesterday, yeah, yesterday there was the joint meeting, um, between the counties of the health district, um.
It was that, sorry.
Yeah, Jamie was on that, Jean was on it, I was on it, um, we had to have a.
Rick was on it.
Okay, so that was, uh, that meeting, basically, all the counties approved, um, the delivery request, um, that the Western Plains Health District had. And I think that's all the updates I have, Jean?
I could not find my notes, but the road department is working on, uh, on county five, seven. And I can't think of the, I'm not gonna say the road number because I'll get it wrong, but another road down in that area, they're, um, gonna be doing some more work on county twenty, between Hazen and Buella. Um, we're looking at getting gravel. Still haven't made a decision on exactly how we wanna do the gravel, we have gravel down on Highway thirty-one, but haul that all the way up to Golden Valley. We, we don't know yet what, what we're gonna do, we have some contractors up in the area who do have gravel, so that might be an option. Other than that, uh, clerk of court has nothing, the state's attorney hasn't, um, come up with issues for me, so everything else looks good. That's all.
Okay. Next thing we had on the agenda was the reassignment of the E M H R, as Jean requested.
All right, um, I think we need to reassign the emergency management to the sheriff's department, I've talked to the sheriff's department, they have indicated that they're, uh, Terry Turnus is willing to take it on, he will assign someone in his department, that, those job duties. He will find a fit, he'll find a person, he will let us know who that individual will be, but if we need to name a person for now, it would be Terry Turnus, the sheriff.
Okay. Do you wanna make a motion to that effect?
Sure, I make a motion that we, um, reassign the emergency management to the sheriff's department.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion?
I have nothing more to add.
Would this be effective immediately?
Pardon?
Would this be effective immediately, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I guess I don't, I mean, I'm not, I think the sheriff's office, some of it is a good fit, I don't know. Maybe there was other fits or other reassignment, or just maybe hire it, I don't know, I just think that it needs to be looked at one way or the other.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing done, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All would aye, that motion passes. Anything else, Jean?
Uh, H R, do we wanna look at, uh, how do we wanna do that, do we wanna reassign H R? Do we have someone else in mind, our auditor's quite busy?
I also was questioning what happens with the bill for services that were already provided, I know we voted it down, but what happens now with it?
Well, if you decided to go with a contract on it, then we would probably revisit that bill. Um, I think the reason we voted it down was because we didn't have a contract in place by, approved by the commission.
Agreed, I just.
So, I mean, if that's the way you wanna go with it, if that's, I guess I would look at it as the contract. And if that becomes our H R for the time being, you know, that's the commission's decision, but we have to make it clear who's doing what.
And you guys all have a copy of the contract, so you even have contact with it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a recommendation where, what to do with the H R, so I'm definitely looking for, um, assistance on that guidance. And if we're okay the way it currently is, but I would recommend we, uh, definitely look at something in the very near future.
So if you're not ready to do anything today, we can?
I have, no, I, I don't have a particular individual in the county, I've not talked to anyone, so I don't know anyone who'd be.
Well, and since it wasn't added to our budget.
Yeah, we always have to figure out how to pay for it, but.
But I do know, H R, we need to, I'm, at this time, I'm not opposed to H R, but we need, I feel it needs to be someone pretty much independent from, uh, the county. In other words, not a department head within the county, I think we need to look at, yeah, if we have to contract or hire a complete, um, I don't even know the word for it, but someone who's totally, would be connected with, uh, a, a particular department, so there'd be no bias or influence.
Independent contractor, I think is the word you're looking for, which would be if we had the contract, but if you're not ready to.
Nope.
Move on it today, so.
Anything right now, so.
Okay. Anything else from the commission before we go into executive session? And I didn't bring my little sheet here either.
You got our things to put on the door?
Yep, right here. You ready?
You ready, Todd?
Oh, wait, hold on, what about the ten thirty?
Oh, did we miss something? Oh, auditor requests.